The camera going?
Look at that, she's rolling.
Huh?
Take one.
Take one.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is Monday night, June 20th, 2016, opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting. And present, Mr. Robert Jones. Actually, I should call him Mr. Jones. Myself, Paul Sadik. We have our Treasurer, Jeff Cannon, our town accountant. Kim Vales, Administrative Assistant, Ally Galls. And I think we're ready to go. We're missing Jack Healy, Town Administrator. All right. It is five o'clock. And anybody recording the meeting?
Bring in.
Paul Sadik. There you go. All right, let's see. Things on the agenda. We've got some, Board of Health Variants for 17 Denise Ave. At 6:05, 6:10, we have a joint meeting with Water Commissioners. Anybody here to talk to us, public discussion? You're here for a particular item. Nobody here for public discussion? And I guess we'll take the first thing on the Board of Selectmen's agenda. And that is Jeff Cannon, the town Treasurer, to talk to us about the OPEB investments.
Thank you. Good evening. I guess where we're at right now, it's time to start getting serious about OPEB. We've had about $167,000 in a pooled money market account for a while now. And then the town just committed an additional $200,000. So we'll have $367,000. And, you know, we don't want that to be earning one half, 1% in a money market account. So, you know, there are three or four different ways to go. And I'm basically here tonight to give you an idea of what those are. And, you know, perhaps help you focus on which way you want to head on this thing.
Jeff, how do you get into that?
Care for one?
Are you gonna touch on what a municipality can invest money in? Because a lot of times you hear people say, hey, why aren't you in the stock market? And we all know that that's a no-no. But could you explain it? Because there's people watching. Because a lot of people will say, well, you're not making any money in your interest.
Yeah, first and foremost, this is a long-term investment horizon when we talk about OPEB, OPEB money. That's other post-employment benefits. More specifically, it's retiree health insurance. And I think it's a well-known fact that there's a large unfunded liability throughout the United States, really. It's a nationwide problem. And so that's what we're here to try to address. You know, for most of the funds that I deal with, they're for the general operating budget annually. So they're short-term funds. And you can't really do anything exotic with short-term funds. I mean, you're pretty much limited to, you know, money markets, certificates of deposit, maybe some short-term treasury notes. But that's about it. But when you get into the longer term, you do have some options open to you. But you have to adhere to the Massachusetts legal list, which is revised once a year. And it does permit some equity investment. But it's pretty specific as to what can be invested, where, and how much. So in that this is long-term money, that's kind of what we're looking at. But we have to be careful as well. So if you take a look at this list, I mean, it seems to me there are four ways to go. We can continue doing what we're doing right now, which is essentially nothing. Okay, we're just partnering the money. Or we could go with the state OPEB program, which is part of PRT, which is part of the overall pension reserve trust fund with the state. And there's about $50 billion, $55 billion invested there. Plymouth County also has an OPEB program. They've been working to build over the past 18 months or so. And they have a fair number of customers now after 18 months. And then we could do a private, self-directed type OPEB fund with a private company. I'm thinking of Bartholomew &amp; Company, Rockland Trust. I think Eastern Bank does some of that work. There are several of them out there. For tonight's illustrative purposes, I selected Rockland Trust. And that's where I sort of did my due diligence. I suspect there's a great deal of similarity between all of the companies. So what I did in the left-hand column, I tried to think, well, you know, what would the board like to see? What kind of questions would they have? What kind of comparisons would they like to make? So I came up with these, I don't know, maybe a dozen categories. And compared the three programs. And one thing I would suggest is that, I mean, PRT, the SRBT, the state program, it is what it is. It's a very, it's a huge program. And you'll note down at the bottom, second, the second item up, available to meet pre-decision with the town. They were really noncommittal about that, especially after I told them how much we had to invest. Because, you know, to them, that's just a small change. But Cape Cod would come out here. And I know Rockland Trust would come out here. And probably the other private companies would come out here as well. And, you know, that's probably, that would be a strong recommendation on my part to select Plymouth County and perhaps a private vendor to come out and address the board, perhaps the Finance Committee. And, you know, make a selection on that basis. Anyhow, starting at the top, I'll go through these. And we don't need to spend a lot of time on this. But I think it'll give you a pretty good overview of what's offered out there. Annual fees are all about the same. Basis points are merely an expression of percentage. So 53 basis points is 0.53 percentage. Plymouth County's 52, and Rockland Trust is 50. So I thought, well, what would that be on $500,000? Which we don't have yet, but we will one day. So on $500,000, you can see you're talking about $2,500 in fees.
Annual fee.
In annual fees.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is there a minimum with any of these to invest upfront?
Yes, there is. You'll see that a little later, yeah. So I believe that that easily comes in within the procurement threshold of, is $10,000 still?
Would be, well, to secure quotes, over 35 is an RFP or IFB.
Over 35. All right, so anyhow, that's basically what we're talking about in fees. Investment choices, you don't get a choice when you go with the state or you go with Plymouth County. If you went on a private basis, you'd have, maybe 100%, so overstating it. But you'd have certainly more of a choice as to how you wanted to invest. Equity exposure, the state, 50% plus. Plymouth County, 72%. And with a private outfit, it would be more semi-self-directed. For example, with Rockland Trust, it would be somewhere between 30 and 75%. When I say 50-plus with the state, you know, they get into hedge funds, natural resources, real estate. They get into some pretty exotic stuff.
When you say exposure, you're talking about possible losses.
Well, equities, there's always possible.
Yes, okay.
But even in fixed income, there can be possible losses as well. But they're never as dramatic. And they're probably not as likely. But we'll get, it's a good point, Paul, and we'll get to that in just a minute.
So is that the amount that they're investing in equities, basically? Up to 50%?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
In the case of Plymouth County, 72%.
72%.
Yeah, and you don't have any choice on that. Liquidity, and I've said in the event of a meltdown, as in 2008, you have the least amount in the state, a little bit better with Plymouth County, and of course, the best if it's self-directed. And I say that because if you're with hedge funds, or you're investing in real estate or natural resources, you may have a hard time getting out of that. There may be no market when you go to sell. And, you know, so that's something to consider. Diversification, you know, everybody diversifies pretty well. PRT has what's known as their core fund. And, you know, it's very diversified, and so is Plymouth County. And, you know, if you went privately, that would be the same thing. Assumed discount rate, this is kind of important. Because there's this unfunded liability out there. And, you know, I have to say, knowing what I know about pension funds and OPEB, there seems to be this chase for yield. Because the higher you can convince an actuary that you're going to receive in returns, the better it's going to look on when you're going to resolve that liability, that unfunded liability. So everybody's kind of chasing yield. But that can be, that can be kind of dangerous. You know, Paul, you probably remember the old days, safety, liquidity, and yield. Yield being number three. Well, yield isn't as important if you've got a long-term horizon as it might be with a short or midterm horizon. I mean, it's still important. Safety's often important, too. Safety of principle. And, you know, the one thing about a privately-directed program like this is that you can take a less aggressive stance in the early years. Because that's where the concern is, really. You know, you invest, you know, $300,000, and we have a 2008 meltdown. It's going to take you years to recover. And, you know, you will probably eventually. But you've got to consider that. Because, you know, everybody wants to buy in low. They want the market to take off. And they want to look like, you know, heroes after the first or second year. But that doesn't, that doesn't always occur.
We all know that works.
Huh?
We all know how that works. It doesn't.
And, you know, there's an awful lot of people out there that think that, you know, 1,800, or 18,000 with the Dow is pretty high right now. Pretty high valuation. So, you know, we might want to be a little bit cautious about getting into a program that's 75% equities in a market that some consider to be, you know, somewhat overpriced right now. And then have that first year turn into a, at least on paper, you know, turn into a disaster. Now, I say just on paper. But to a lot of people, what's on paper is reality. And it's hard to explain away a big loss when you first get into a program. So just something, you know, something to consider.
Can I just add something to that? At the conference that I just attended, the actuary from Odyssey, who's Parker Elmore, who does the valuation for OPEB for the town, was there. And there's new GASP rules coming out in terms of now we're going to be putting the OPEB liability on the balance sheet, starting in fiscal '18. And one thing that's important about that is the actuaries are getting a lot of pressure to be much more realistic in their rates of return that they're using for their calculations. So what he had basically said is, the more that you can fund, and the, not necessarily the more that you can earn, but demonstrate that you have an investment policy for your OPEB, the better off it's going to be for reflecting a lower liability on your balance sheet. So there's going to be a lot more focus on this. So the decision that you make, I think you want to have as much control over that. Because the clearer the actuaries can see your rates of return, the easier it's going to be for them to value your liability.
If I remember correctly, during the budget process, I think we opted to put $200,000 in.
Right.
And I think we said we were going to, I don't know if we actually took an actual vote. That's the plan for the future.
Exactly.
Throwing that $200,000 in. Because it's a pretty good spread between what we, our liability is and what we're putting in there.
And another point that came up was, you know, we're on schedule to fully fund the pension liability by 2034 or 2036, something like that. I know it still seems far away. But we are talking a long-term liability with this. So once the pension piece is fully funded, you can shift more of those dollars towards funding OPEB. So you can supplement that 200 with hopefully a lot more money.
You think it'll be funded by 2036?
I hope so.
2036, right? I'll invite you to my 88 birthday party.
All right. We'll have Kate and celebrate.
No, that's fine. That's good. Thank you. Okay, so the assumed discount rate, and that's what I was just talking about, okay? It's just a, it's just a pretty term for, really, for just average yield. And so, you know, the state is saying, well, you know, with the investments that we have, with our equity and our fixed income investments, and our natural resources, and real estate and everything like that, you know, we're told that we can expect on average 7.34%. Well, maybe. Plymouth County is using 8%. What an actuary would tell us would be more self-directed. And I should say, like, you know, Bartholomew and Rockland Trust, they're not going to let you just, you know, cherry pick everything that you're doing. But they have, you know, like, an aggressive investment program for OPEB, a moderate, a less moderate, like that. You have three or four different choices. Initial funding, the state needs to, or the, yeah, the state needs to see $100,000. And there is no requirements for the other two. Continued funding requirements, it's strictly up to the municipality. Retrals, pretty quick. You don't have to wait long for your money. Of course, they all need to be IRS and Mass Law compliant. And they all are. There are contracts to sign. But you can also exit with 30 days of written notice for all three of them. And onsite performance reviews, you wouldn't get any with the state. Plymouth County is amenable to the idea. But Rockland Trust, for example, I don't know about the others, but Rockland Trust would come out semi-annually unless you told them to. Compliance with our investment policy, probably it would be compliant with our investment policy. Because our investment policy is mostly based upon Mass General laws. But not necessarily. There would actually be an agreement with, in this instance, Rockland Trust, that they would have to adhere to our town's investment policy. And they've seen our investment policy. You know, it's a pretty standard type investment policy. So I wouldn't expect any problem there. The custodians, trustees, well, in the state program, it would be the, you know, the retirement board. With Plymouth County, it would be US Bank. And here in Freetown, it would be Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Chairman of the Finance Committee, Chairman of the Personnel Board, the Accountant, and the Treasurer. So it would be a five, five-person trustee, trustees. Reporting, the states monthly and annually, they're all about the same, okay? And they tell me that they give everything that we, that our accountant and our auditors need to have. Now, I'm not an accountant, so I didn't ask any further questions. But that would be something that you'd probably want to ask and perhaps see if you were to invite them out here to meet with you. And the contract, they all require, you know, some sort of agreement. But again, you can, you can exit with 30 days of notice. And so that's, that's essentially what my research has uncovered.
Jessica, you explain this also.
We've been through this, yeah. She's on vacation, so she couldn't be here tonight.
I guess my only comment would be, I don't think we should do anything until after November. That's my feeling.
What, November date?
Because of the general election. Because we don't know what the markets are going to do. I think we should, I mean, we could plan this stuff, but I don't think we should invest any money until we see what happens with the markets. Because as you well know, you said it earlier, the dollar's way up, you know? And everybody says it's all a value.
Yeah.
We don't want to get caught in a correction right off the bat.
Yeah, and when you, I agree with you in a sense, Paul. When you're dealing with public money, you know, I presume there are people out there that look at this stuff, you know? And you don't want to get into a program and take a big loss in the first year or so. The nice thing about being able to exit anytime you want, I mean, you know, my feeling is to go private, because you have more control. Don't go for yield the first two or three years. Select a program that's a little bit more conservative. And then when you feel comfortable, you know, with it, and you take a look at other, you know, when you take a look at the performance with Plymouth County, say, or the state over that period of time, and compare it with what you've achieved, then you can make a more informed decision, I think, maybe in the third or fourth year. Because again, it's such a long-term horizon that, you know, three or four years isn't going to make much of a difference unless you take a huge hit. And then it's going to take years to recover that.
I remember, so it had been, it was well before 2008, prior crash. And Bristol County retirement was pretty conservative in their investments. And then I think it was Plymouth County that wasn't as conservative. And they took one heck of a hit.
Yeah.
Plymouth County. And everybody was up in ours, we shouldn't have been investing in theirs. That's the problem with using municipal money.
Yeah.
You take a hit, and it takes a long time to get it back.
It does.
Who would be doing the day-to-day operations? Like you said, we have someone here, the, some, for example, Rockland. Selecting where our exposures are, if we're picking 25% in high yield, 25% in medium, and 50% in long-term, probably bonds, whatever. Who would be picking those?
Well, yeah, I would, I would.
If there's a shift, there is a correction, you know, whose jobs are going to be to say, oh, we need to shift our position down to bonds, buy all long-term yield bonds? You know, who makes those decisions?
Right. Let's just say.
Private. The state's doing those for you in the state program. When you buy in the state, you don't have any control.
Right. In that case, the trustees would make the decision. But it would obviously be in consultation with the investment people at Rockland Trust, for example. They would not make that decision on their own. Now, they're the experts, of course. But they would want to be able to present that to the trustees.
Would you recommend the trustees meet monthly? Would they meet quarterly?
No, no, no. I think quarterly.
Semi-annually?
At the very most. But probably semi-annually when, say, for example, Rockland came in to give their presentation. Which they do do. I should fully disclose here. I have done work with them before. And so I know what they do. By the way, this is their, this is their customer list, client list. I think they've got about 22 OPEB customers here. But I knew them when I was in Barnstable. And I was part of the Cape Cod Municipal Healthcare Group. And we hired them to manage our surplus. And that's what they would do. They would come in every six months, give us a presentation, make recommendations. And then the Finance Committee would, you know, generally go ahead with those recommendations. I mean, nobody expects the trustees in the town of Freetown to be investment experts. But surely, they want to be informed as to any changes that are, that are being made.
And the trustees would have to approve the change.
That's right. That's right. So I think twice a year, unless, unless there was that meltdown, well, then that would certainly call for, you know, special meeting.
Plymouth County would be similar to the state. Plymouth County would do all the management, correct?
That's right. You don't have any choice as to investment. And right now, I mean, they're doing pretty good. I went to a seminar that they offered on the Cape a couple months back. And, to have, to give you an idea who they're working with, Plymouth County, Carver Eastham, Hanson, Plainville, Plington, Wareham, Whitman, Cape Cod Regional, Dennis Yarmuth, Monmouth. Primarily, you know, the Cape and Islands.
They've been, this has been going on for over a year now, right?
About 18 months.
What's the yield for its past 12 months?
I don't have that figure. No. You know, as far as the state goes, I mean, they have a gazillion number of customers. As far as, say, Rockland Trust, they're working for OPEB only. Sharon, Walpole, Barnstable, Moore, Watertown, Everett, Yarmuth, Westfield, Somerset, Berkeley Regional School District, Ashland, Harwich, Old Colony Vocational, Abel, Dukes County, Mashpee, Norwell. So business is spread around, you know? I don't guess there's any one right answer for any of this. It's just basically how you all feel about it.
At some point, we're going to have to make a decision.
I mean, both, like you said. You know the state's secure. You know the state's always going to be here. Rockland Trust is a good-sized bank. But banks fall. So you get trust in the state, but yet you don't have any control of what your money is or what it's doing. You know? You get better returns, only on yield, though, really. Because we don't know what Rockland's yield was. So Rockland's yield may have been close to this, some of these yield numbers, correct?
Well, yeah, I looked at the state, and I have looked at Rockland. And they're pretty similar. You know, two of the programs, you can think of it this way, I guess. Two of the programs, I think of them as fire and forget. Send the check and forget about it.
Right.
Reports come in annually, you know, well, more than that. But I mean, reports that we need for our, you know, our financials. And then the other one is more, is a little bit more involved.
And that extra involvement may not yield much difference.
And depending on who's picking it, it may not be good involvement.
Oh, I would think, I would think the involvement would actually result in lower returns.
Lower returns.
For the first two or three years.
Absolutely.
But you don't have the same level of risk. As I say, I believe that there really is a chase for yield on this. Because, you know, everybody, there's a huge unfunded liability. And everybody wants to show that they're going to be able to come in and fund it sooner, or at least by that amount of time.
But currently, there is no requirement to fund. So keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Currently, "currently" being the key word, though.
They'll catch up to us.
They will.
You know they will.
They will. But where you have limited resources to begin with, I think you would want to consider those being as secure as you can. Because we don't have a lot currently to potentially lose.
Right. A question that doesn't pertain to this, but does pertain to our money, how money, how do we secure our town money?
Well, most of our accounts are secured through state insurance. We also do have some collateralization agreements.
Okay, we still have collateralization. Okay. All right. I don't know. Why do we, I don't know. Let's just wait.
Yeah.
We'll have to see. We got the information, we'll have to hold off.
What kind of groundwork do we need to set? If we wanted to meet, say, Paul's November timeline? How involved is the process for different? It sounds like the state, Plymouth County, that'd be pretty straightforward. But Rockland Trust might be a little more.
Well, actually, I mean, I've got the documents required for all of them, for the state, for Plymouth County, and for Rockland Trust. These people could probably get you set up in 10 days, you know?
But like privately on our side, we'd have to then set up, put together the board. Have the board meet, discuss all the options with the board. Let them decide. But like privately on our side, we'd have to then set up, put together the board, have the board meet, discuss all the options with the board, let them decide, you know. So there's a, there's a little more on our end if we go private, where, like you said, fire and forget, you send them the form and a check and.
Right.
They're off and going into state.
Right, as far as, I know in Rockland Trust's case, establishing the board of trustees would not be very difficult. Chairman for the board, selectmen for the finance committee, what do they say, personnel board, accountant, and treasurer.
Yeah.
But you're right, you're right, that would take, that would take a little bit longer, but I wouldn't think any more than a month.
Then, at that point, you get all kinds of different opinion as to what to go, some people may have a financial background, others may not, well, this, you know, certainly the treasurer and the, and the accountant have a financial background.
I think, though, that before that point, it would be advisable to have some people in here talking to you. You know, and, and maybe not just to you, but also maybe to the finance committee, Kim could be here, the treasurer could be here. And I guess the personnel board representative who's on the board of selectmen, yeah, so.
Yes, Lisa is.
So that, that probably would be a recommendation of mine, to do that.
By the way, where is your exit date?
Twenty-eight O I.
He's talking like a military guy.
Twenty-eight. I bet you can tell you the D's.
Seventeen.
One thing, maybe it would make sense to try to put this board together to even then kind of talk about the options in a little more detail, and maybe as a group, kind of make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation to the full board.
To the board of selectmen, considering, well, two of the board members will already be on it.
The most senior two.
Just trying to get out of work, you know. So you want to do that?
I, that, that does make sense, I mean, that's how we would normally have a subcommittee that would mull it all over and then make a recommendation to the full board, so.
I think that we should delay this until after July, at least to get together.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, I, I was just thinking.
Hoping that we weren't gonna have another board meeting until the 11th, and it doesn't appear, it appears that we need to have it next Monday. Because of.
Yeah, August, like, what's that first meeting in August, Hallie?
Aren't you glad you came so early, huh? Still are workings at the pound.
I feel like the first meeting in August.
Eight.
Can I do that?
Yeah, I can do eight. I'll put that off for the eight, you can invite all those people, and Jeff will always be gone here, he'll be sitting there watching TV, watching us on TV saying, oh, am I glad I'm out of here? All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Sure.
Seventeen days isn't long to go.
No, it's not, I'll tell you, it's, you know, I, I, sometimes I think maybe I bit off too much, and so I've got all this stuff compressing. It's like putting it all down a funnel, you know, like a chute, it's not coming together.
Well, I think, I think.
Huh?
I hope it's a funnel, not a chute. I think that, you know, you're coming in, and between you and Jessica and everything else, I think we should be in pretty good shape as we move forward.
I think it'd be fine.
And the guidance of our town council will always keep a watch over any new people in that office.
She's kept an eye on me.
Hey, she keeps an eye on us.
That's right.
The gamekeeper.
That's right.
I know why.
That's right.
All right, so we're good?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
You're coming back, right?
I will.
All right, thanks.
Taking a break.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. All right, what time are our partners coming in?
A little past six.
A little past six. Well, I don't want to, you know, you're up next, so why don't you, oh, we have Kevin's here.
Yeah.
There you go, Kevin's here, tell us your name for the record, your address for the record, and what you want to do.
My name's Jane Freeman, I live at Tupickin's Ave in Cleveland Park, I have a mobile home, non-mobile home, a trailer there. I'd like to be able to stay there once in a while, because I do a lot of maintenance on my property, and I'm in Florida most of the year. And I stay down the Cape a lot, but if I'm tired, I just want to stay there. I've got a, I fixed the water problem, I've got a rain barrel for the, I have freights pump out everything, I wouldn't do anything to harm the environment.
Freights pump out what?
Uh, the septic.
Septic. They come and they pump out the septic?
They come right up to the, right to the camper, and they pump it out, yeah. And that's, I'm not gonna be there a lot, I don't want to live there, I just want to be able to stay there once in a while.
Where do you get your electricity from?
Right now, I'm getting it from the house, I do have an electrician coming out, and he's gonna put a plug on the meter.
Do you have a permit to do that?
You have to have a permit.
I assume that he will, because he's electrician, because he's gonna break the meter, yeah. I'm just waiting for him, he's on vacation.
What are you doing for water?
I have a pump.
From where, the well?
From the well.
Does that run through your house, too?
No.
You use a hand pump?
No, Jeff, it's a pump, regular pump.
Would the wireless go through the trailer? Is it hooked to the trailer?
The pump hooks to the trailer.
Okay, and that feeds the trailer?
Yeah. And also, I can't, it took a lot of the gardens.
What do you think?
I have a few questions, your permanent residence is where, what are you asking?
Fort Myers-Floyd.
Fort Myers-Floyd, so half a year you lived there, then you mentioned Cape Cod.
Yeah, in Sagamore, my daughter.
At, at times you stay there.
Yeah, and I have a room in Provincetown, and right now, I'm staying with a friend in Lakeville. But she's probably getting sick of me.
I'm not, not sure if anybody mentioned this before, but the bylaw specifically says there's a certain timeframe where someone can reside in, in, in a camper or a trailer. Not much, three weeks or possibly another three weeks, granted. The only concern I had tonight, Scott Barbado sent an email, so I'm not speaking to him, he had sent the same thing. We were concerned about septic, and, and who was pumping it out, you, you had mentioned freights.
You have receipts for those.
Yeah, and you're currently not living there now, right? We're on there, we're on site today, and I knocked on the door, I talked to, to your tenant.
Right.
I missed you, and I didn't have your phone number, we saw the electric.
Yeah.
I saw that rain barrel, what does the rain barrel do?
That's for the gray water.
Okay.
Because that's separate from the other, the other thing that's pumped.
And then there's the, there's a small tank on the bottom.
That's for the other.
That's for the solids.
Right.
Black one.
Okay, right.
That's for the solids, right?
Well, there's one in the camper, and then when that's full, I, I do the other one, and then the freights come.
So you make the transfer yourself into that other tank?
Yes.
See, I went out there today. And you, you didn't answer the door.
I wasn't there, my tenant actually texted me.
Well, we saw your car, we took you home.
No, I was, I stayed with my friend in Lakeville, and I was in my boat, I left my car there, but I didn't, I'm not staying there, no.
Because I just looked outside, and it's the same car that I saw there.
Yeah, the car's been sleeping there, but I haven't.
What about, first of all, we have a bylaw, okay? If you're gonna stay in the trailer, it can only be for like three weeks, if I'm, what, three weeks in a season.
Twenty-one days.
In 12 months. In a 12-month period, and the board can then up it for another three weeks.
Does it have to be three weeks together, or can I just do a few days here?
Well, the problem here is, we don't know, I mean, listen, I think it has to be together, if you get, if you're asking for, if you say, hey, I want to put a trailer there, and we say, yeah, go ahead for three weeks, that's three weeks for the day we authorize it, because we don't know if you're there or you're not there, you know? But I had concerns when I went there today, because, first of all, I don't like to see, I saw the separate tank for the gray, for the solids, and I'm thinking, well, she's transferring the solids into that tank herself. I don't think that's proper, I think, in my opinion, that's not proper, because you can spill anything.
Yeah.
The other thing is you had, a white hole is going to the, the big barrel, but it didn't, it looked like it was coming from the same output of, as the, as the solids.
Well, if this, like, if you close it off, so the solids is closed, is in the camper, the gray water's coming out.
And then the other issue is, how do we know you have, are we smoke detectors and so forth, and that, that's a safe location to be?
Because that was one of our recommendations, the building inspector and I, if you're gonna occupy something or sleep in it, then we have to make sure it's to be the same thing as a home. Does it have running water, we check, electric, we check, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, overall, just a regular house inspection, to make sure, we say yes, it's okay, we feel confident it's okay.
Okay.
And then, since you had mentioned that, Paul, with the septic, I'd rather see it all contained in one unit.
That's how I would think.
All right, so when freights comes?
I just have to come.
How often does freight come?
Um, one every three weeks. If I'm there.
So there'd only be one pumping there, if it was a three-week period. If they emptied out that first time, before, if, if the board voted to have her reside there for three weeks, she would pump it beforehand, and the housing inspection, and then she wouldn't need to pump it out until right after, I guess.
You'd be amenable to having, letting them go and doing the inspections, make sure the house is safe to dwell in. So can we set up a time that the two of you can go and, and set that up, and we'll put this on hold, they'll, we'll get their report back. Once we get their report back, then we can make a decision one way or the other.
I have to get the smoke and.
Smoke, carbon monoxide.
Yeah, I would just ensure that things, things are in working auto.
Those are the two things I don't have.
Smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, when you're running with, with the heat, with the water, there's gonna be hot water in there.
Make sure it's hot water.
Yeah, we're not so worried about the heat now, to heat up the house, because it's not, it's not, it's warm right now.
What are you worried about, in case there's a fire, anyway, a cooking fire, anything, right?
What are you using for heat, is it propane, is it natural gas, is it electric?
I don't, I don't, maybe.
Hot water for you, make your hot water, a lot of money.
Oh, propane.
Electric. It's electric hot water.
So with electric, you can take showers there if you want.
Right.
In this, in the, in the gray water, that fifty, that plastic big drum, it looks like a fifty-gallon drum, they, they'll, they offload that, they take it? I think you've got a very good point, let them check it.
They'll go check, see what they need, we need, we need, and then they'll make us a recommendation, and we'll, like, I don't, Board of Health will act on it.
I think that makes sense, because instead of saying yes, and then going back, and say, well, we saw a few things.
Right.
This way we say, hey, let's fix this now.
Right, and then we're all on the same page.
Yeah, that's, you're absolutely right, and the thing is, I mean, if you get, let these guys out there, you know, between now and, say, Friday, you know, we've got a meeting, we think we've got a meeting next Monday, and if we do, it would be just, if everything's okay, the board may, I can't speak for my fellow selectmen, but at least we can say, hey, everything's all right, we'll let, get this lady a permit for three weeks. Now, I know last year you had an issue, right, you were there, you got cited and all this other stuff, what are you gonna do after three weeks?
I'd like to apply for another three weeks, if I won't be there for three weeks.
Well, we, like I said, it will be three weeks from today, from whatever day we approve it, now you're gonna come back and ask for another three weeks, then that, that, that's the max that we can do.
Yeah.
May I ask questions?
You can ask anything you want, check.
You know, what kind of camper is it? Is it a tag along?
Yes, thirty-five foot tag along.
And what make is it?
I want to say Sunline, Sun, something.
You know how old it is?
I'll say seventy-nine, eighty.
That, it was built in seventy-nine or eighty?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Could I'm in the market for RV, and how will we move them out?
You're, you're looking to buy an, an RV that's, that moves by itself, right?
Right, yeah, well, I've got a guide.
You don't, yeah, where you drive it, you don't have to tow it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because that thing's pretty much stay in the place.
That one is for now.
So I would imagine that it's not roadworthy, you don't think?
Oh, I could put it on those.
Yeah, how do you get it out of here?
That's what we were talking about, how to get out of it.
Oh, it's, it's been there for a while, it's kind of grown yet.
If I had a loaded backhoe, I'd put it there.
Oh, I see. To make sure it stayed there.
It is a beautiful location, we are actually.
I got twenty-five acres on the lake, it's not like it's just.
It is a nice view.
Thank you, I love it.
And you own the house?
I own the house.
Well, I, I guess that's a reasonable approach.
Yeah, I would say probably this week I'll set something up with you, because I am on vacation next week, so probably just to move things along.
Yeah, in that way, because if we have the meeting Monday night, it's certainly, if you guys get, you and Scott give us a report saying everything looks okay for three weeks.
Already deficits that you find that you have to be corrected first.
Fees or anything, or how does that, for a permit?
Well, you don't need a permit for the first three weeks, correct?
No.
First three weeks is not by law for 21 days, and then after 21 days, then they would come back for an extended.
Extended, but there's no people.
Not for the first 21 days, no.
All right, let's, let's choose for Thursday.
Do you want, do we need a motion to, to?
We already numbered down again.
I'll give you a call, but let's, let's try for Thursday, probably the best day.
Do we need a motion, we just haven't?
The only problem is we need a time and place that we can do.
All right, we're, we're gonna make a, we're gonna have a motion then, ma'am.
Is this under the Board of Health, or is this under?
It's under the Board of Health agent, I mean, we're going to help chairman.
I don't want to interrupt you.
Well, you should have, you should have woke me up. Go ahead, you carry on.
No, I'm looking for a motion.
Oh. We're gonna, I'll make a motion that we're gonna continue this, you, you've agreed to let the building inspector and the health agent in, review it, and they're gonna get back to us.
Okay.
All right, my motion is that we will continue this until we get a report from the health agent and the building inspector. Once we get that, we'll schedule for the next upcoming Board of Selectment meeting, if all goes well, it'll probably be next Monday.
Second, motion made and seconded and discussion, hearing known, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, abstain.
That's it.
So recorded.
All right. You gotta, you gotta wait.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Hey, aye.
First meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Huh?
No.
You just look outside. I looked out the window, but I didn't hear.
You watch, Jack, somewhere up on the side, yeah.
All right, let's see. Next thing on the agenda would be, June 10th, the Board, the Town of Freetown Board of Selectmen received three open meeting block complaints from a gentleman by the name of Patrick Higgins. I want to acknowledge the receipt of these open meeting block complaints, and I'd like to get a motion to have our town council, like to authorize our town council to respond to the Attorney General regarding these three open meeting block complaints.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made, I'll second it, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next thing on the agenda is the Board of Health.
Board of Health, Personnel.
It's not up for the Board of Health?
Uh, six oh five.
Six oh five, so we should go.
Six oh five, right.
So we should go down the line, huh?
Correct.
All right, let me see what I've got here for that, I think I printed something up.
We have personnel stuff to do, too.
Yeah, let me see. All right. All right, first of all, fiscal year seventeen, we have a bunch of changes, change of status forms, they've already been checked by the town accountant's office, and they should be ready for us to approve. The change of status forms would be for the customary July 1st change in the payroll because of people that had contractual increases. That's one of the things that we have to do, and the second thing is that we have a number of reappointments to make, so why don't we?
Well, first, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve slash sign all changes status forms for fiscal year 2017 for the Fire, Communication Center, Town Hall, Departments, Highway, Library, Council on Agent, Veterans Agent, Zoning, Board of Appeals, Conservation Committee, and the Tree Ward. veterans event agent, zoning, Board of Appeals, conservation committee, and the tree ward.
Okay, motion made, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And, let's see.
You wanna do a second motion right off the bat, or you wanna sign first?
No, you know what, let's do the second motion right off the bat.
All right. I'll make a second motion to sign all reappointments except for one for fiscal year seventeen. The one exception will be the harbor master, which I will abstain from, the harbor master.
Okay, so, since there's only two of us.
Yeah, all that kinda work, right? Unless we do have a meeting next Monday.
We'll put it back Monday. We'll put it back on Monday.
Okay.
All right. All right, so I will second Mr. Jones's, uh, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So now we've got a ton of stuff to sign, so I as well relax, because there's nothing else we can do.
We have nothing else before six oh five?
Well, the other thing we can do is, uh, set up the dates for the town, uh, for Board of Selectmen's meeting, get that out of our here.
Not much days am I here, so.
All right, well.
Eleven.
I think I'm more than me.
Eleven, twenty-three. That's my choice. You wanna do the dates, uh, it looks like Monday, the eleventh, July eleventh.
Right.
Monday, July twenty-fifth, Monday, August eighth, which I will not be at, and Monday, August twenty-second.
Okay.
Do you wanna also add to that?
Twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh, yes.
Six P M. All at COA.
That's correct. And Ally, could you, um?
That was a motion, by the way.
That was a motion. Okay, I'll, I'll second your motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ally, would you notify the gentleman I talked to today?
Mr. Bierra.
Mr. Bierra?
Okay. We also, um, I guess that'll be under, we're under new business still?
Uh, yeah, we can do new business.
Anything that needs to be going on to that June twenty-third for reports or anything else? Anything anybody has that wants to be on that meeting, have them in for us by Friday?
The June twenty-seventh meeting?
The June twenty-seventh meeting.
Yeah, I need it before Friday to go on to the agenda.
Well, yeah, but everybody's stuff that needs to be in, in time to make the, the meeting. Police chief, or whoever else is gonna have reports.
Do we have stuff?
Kevin, Scott, anybody?
Well, now you can do, uh,
You guys.
Reserve on transfers, actually.
Reserve on transfers, okay. How about you on the other thing, you were talking about today? COA. Is that all set?
Um, yeah.
You signed it, that's it?
Yeah, I'm gonna sign it.
I said, all right?
Yeah, we're good.
I just wanna make sure everybody's, so, we're having that meeting for a reason, I wanna make sure everybody's on it.
Okay, get it done, get everything done by your location. All right, so, in that case, we should sign this.
Sign this.
Then we should start signing. We're gonna take a break and start signing.
I'm just signing on meet you, right? Anywhere under there?
Anyway, yeah, you can sign over me, it doesn't matter.
That'd be way too presumptive.
You assign the one for the lady at the end? That's the one we're gonna call.
That's the most important. It's like when you're on the fire, the police department, you don't anger the dispatchers, because they're the ones that send you on the calls.
Never anger the dispatchers.
Is it all fine?
Yes. Kirkland is not. I started signing.
Yeah. Absolutely. It's part of the, it's all screwed up by the meat place. And there are some, uh, here, they could be outside to have some bullshit calls.
All the chains. He was all. I know.
They're right there. Do a list of them, right?
Yeah.
Do you wanna switch papers?
Yeah.
You get two of them, I sent two of them.
Hi. Good, how are you? Hi.
Surprised they didn't put the air on for you, Jack.
Yeah, it's warm, huh? Yeah, take off your shirt, jacket, you don't have your jacket on. No, go ahead. Well, that's why you two go for?
Make sure that we're, you know, for twenty thousand, three foot building.
That is a joy. That ties me along. The, uh, the board voted down to, uh, apply this software message. The seniors come in and they swipe it. And then they sit at a computer and say, well, if you have one. Okay, and the board approved it, and Jack told me about it, he says, Jack. Check. If, if it's purchased, if the board doesn't have, it's not a client, the board doesn't have to say anything, then just talk to them, what are you gonna do?
Was it bad? Thirty, seventy-five hundred, was that good?
Seventy-five hundred?
Yeah, you want?
I don't know.
What was thirty-five hundred?
You should not, you should. That's a good question. Were you on, I, I was going. Truck driver. First, you didn't sign it. Truck.
Oh, because I had him correct it. He gave it back to you, because he had the wrong amount, that's why he had to give it back to me.
You, you'll have him sign it?
Yeah, I'll have him sign it, yeah. Because he had to correct it, because it was wrong. Oh, it didn't have a little?
No.
The little scale?
No.
How'd you make out yesterday on the?
Good, we had, you know, we met some nice people, and my mother got to, you know, chat and.
Make a little money here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was the first time, so it was good.
Good.
Yeah.
Ends up being like a little crap event down there, there's so many.
Right.
Little crafters and stuff.
Right. You know, just a taste of what it's like, because she's never done it before, so.
Good.
I have in the past, but.
You had a beautiful day for it.
Oh, it was gorgeous.
You going back to Boston for more?
Yeah. Yep.
I had to go to Boston on Friday afternoon.
You did?
I left the house at one, I got a couple of the range sisters retirement party.
Yeah.
Took me two hours to get to Cambridge.
Yep. Did you go up ninety-three into?
I went up twenty-four.
To, yeah.
I drove to New York on Friday, on Saturday, and it took us almost five hours to get there, should've been an hour and a half. Three and a half hours. I hate driving like that.
Yeah. When I used to work in Cambridge, I would go, um, to the split. I'd go one-twenty-eight to Route nine, and then I'd just make through Brookline and go that way, because, and I would, it was a lot easier.
All right, see this one here? Ally, Ally had you. I had Chuck go in. We do it then, this one, he's gonna show me Chuck's side.
Very close.
Any more I gotta say in there?
First, I was also the yard worker.
Okay, how are you?
Jumped in the shower.
Yeah. Yeah.
I've had no time, and so I said, oh, I have an hour.
You pulled, you pulled the hovercraft.
Yeah, because I'm so, I'm so far behind, I.
We haven't got to the gym.
Because that leaves so small, that are ranked in pile or.
I have to do something about it. My brother found they're gonna be a progress.
Yeah, the dirt in this park is all like dust. Because the soil is so old and.
Always need a jug.
Yeah. Till it.
I'm using it tomorrow.
I bring two jugs and then I use the hovercraft to get rid of the grass in front of us.
Just make sure they just, I kinda dry them off on my, my.
Actually, I cut them.
Yeah, all that's in the back too, always remain something.
Yeah, well, yeah. The grass, which is a lot easier.
It's pretty big.
Put stuff that just kinda.
Yeah. My trucks.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, because I want, spend a hundred, plants and flowers and stuff, there's not enough time for the plant grass.
No lawn mower.
Yeah, there's a little bit, but. I'd just rather the package man, right?
Where the grass gets smothered.
Yeah. That's easy, just go.
I know some people were talking about going to July, meeting that was personally scheduled.
Sure, that's a lot of advice here for me.
I know some people were talking about going to July eleven meeting.
Well, that's what this guy called me, thought he was gonna get the whole neighborhood.
I was thinking.
What did you feel like up for me?
I was, I got the earphones yesterday, and, well, not the smaller ones too bad. Designed for the.
So I was going to Lancaster this weekend. Friday, Friday we go to Lancaster, and then Saturday morning at eight AM we're gonna play. He's gonna stay with some friends, I'm gonna come back and drive up. I already worked at a town twenty-five.
Has Lisa been, um?
She's gonna work, somebody.
Freaking out.
I'll drive her back, I have the other kids. No way, they'll never get up in five hours. No, August. Nope, uh, we play Friday, Saturday, and then by Saturday at noon.
Well, I'm not only seeing it, it's Sunday.
Because that's, right now it's thirty-two teams, so it's like sixteen ago. It's kinda like the way the World Cups are obviously. So we're gonna. They're, yeah, the Euro Cup, they're on the break. They have to win a tie.
Okay. All right, next thing on the agenda is a Board of Health variance for seventeen Denise Avenue. Is that time?
Sir. I'll take my patients, yeah. Darren McHale is from Forestside Engineering. Hold on one minute, we have one green card returned from Ethelma Albs Life Estate, Seven Point Pines Road.
Yeah, I'm on that deal.
Okay, and you, there's no other green cards though, right?
No, the other one do not get returned either time, because it's the third time I've notified them, I've never gotten that one back.
And that one is the Michael Sherry Beralt, care of Daniel Holmes.
Yes.
Before Cayman Street.
Number nine.
In Lakeville, Mass. And this one's the Ethelma, so, okay?
Okay, so what we have is a septic upgrade, we have a failed tank and pit. Uh, we're proposing a new tank and a new leach field. Unfortunately, we're pinned in by about five wells to make it work best. We're sticking you off to the far corner to stay away from three different wells, which unfortunately forces us to approach on this well at the sixty-five feet, and then to number nine's well, ninety-five feet, but that's a lesser impact coming the other direction, because then I affect three wells, it's not just two. Um, both of these have systems that are closer to their own wells than us. Uh, this is a new upgraded system, so I don't foresee any real issues going forward. We're got our groundwater separation, that's properly designed, and we've got two compartment tanks going in to separate solids. Other than that, it's a pretty standard upgrade.
What variances you're asking for?
I just did the two wells, and then to the, and to the, I believe to the pond.
Yeah, the one.
Yeah, we're less than four.
What is your distances for the two wells? One was sixty-three.
Sixty-five and ninety-five.
Well over the fifty?
Yeah, and we're three hundred and twelve feet from the pond.
Two, three hundred and twelve feet.
Yeah.
They just need the, uh, D restriction, and, uh, like you had mentioned, where, where they're located to the top, but, uh.
Yeah, I think you fitting it in there is probably your best plot, best bet, because.
Yep.
You mitigate the damages to the other, the other systems, so.
What's the D restriction?
For a three bedroom. So we just, uh, moving forward, that'll always be a three bedroom.
Okay.
You can't increase any flow.
No increase in flow.
Right, you're at max now, and you.
Yeah, typically, um, a D restriction is usually restricted to just a two bedroom, that's per Title V. Um, you would be required to have a D restriction. We're only designed for a three bedroom, so no one could ever increase this over a three bedroom anyways, so the D restriction's a little redundant.
Yeah.
If I had designed for four hundred and forty-five gallons per day, then I would suggest you put a D restriction on, because then someone could actually go in and put a fourth bedroom. But right now, they're completely limited, um, nitrogen loading doesn't allow them to increase flow no matter what anyways. So, uh, if you, if you want the D restriction, we could do it, but it's kinda redundant with the state plan being on record. And there's no way anyone could ever decrease this.
I'll make a motion to approve the variances, with the, with the recommendation of a health agent, including the D restriction.
That's fine.
Redundancies don't hurt the plan.
Yep, no problem.
I'll second that, since we don't have a second person.
Real estate agents, they always try to do something else.
You made, a motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll take it, sign.
Approved is, uh, over here.
Thanks, Kevin. Yep, I'll see you.
Are you initial approved, Kevin, or just check it?
I could just check it.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
Anything else for the Board of Health? Been a busy night tonight.
I know, and I didn't screw that one up. I gave it to you.
You tried, I snatched it away.
He saw you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your wife looks a little happier today than the last time.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye, Kevin, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next thing on the agenda is to talk about, is to talk about, um, the water system down in the summer. Uh, we've invited the, um, Board of Water Commissioners. And anybody involved in this discussion, please come up front. And I would assume that at some point you guys have to open up your meeting. Mr. Bock, you gonna open up your meeting?
Yes, sir.
Chandler's here to take your minutes, I guess, right, Chandler?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, uh, now we have Chandler recording our meeting, you're gonna, you'll have to ask that when you open your meeting, Bob.
Yes, sir. I'd like to open the meeting of the Water Commissioners. Present are Brad Byver, myself, Bob Parker, Kevin Demiris, Systems Operator, Stephen Chandler, a senior clerk.
And Ryan, Ryan Train with the Robert Parker Group.
And?
Brent LaRue from Air Gas.
Air Gas, yeah.
Explain why I've asked the Water Commissioner, then I'll leave it to you. Kevin, did you get it on?
I did.
Too many people here. Well, I gave you.
I don't even make sure.
No, they don't need them. Okay.
Okay, one more? Is this the last one?
That's for Lisa.
Oh, you're gonna give it to Lisa?
Well, who needs it?
I was gonna give it to.
All right, okay. Let me go over some stuff here that I don't believe the Board of Selectmen has heard before, they may have, but I got it because I've been on for six years, some of this stuff is brand new. Apparently in 2006, we, we attended, the Board of Water Commissioners attended a meeting in late May with DDP,大气局， Environment, Environmental Protection. But apparently, and at that meeting, this is some of the stuff that we learned, that I learned about for the first time, was 2006, a report was issued by DDP. And it had to do with some excess THMs in the water that we receive from the city of Far River. As a result, at that time, a filter site was built to address the THM issues. Kevin, you been around, if I'm making any mistakes here in my recollection, please correct me. In 2013, DDP did a review and requested corrective action. Environmental Partners representative is here, addressed the DDP findings in a report. All of us now have a copy of the report, including the Board of Selectmen, that was electronically sent to them as well as the town administrator. DDP is scheduled to conduct another review, similar review, in August of this year, 2016, apparently they do a three-year review. And THMs are still the concern for both the town and the DDP.
If I could ask one question?
Yeah.
What's THMs?
Trihalomethanes.
It's a trihalomethanes, it's a, so whenever you have, it's mostly in surface water, which follow orders uses, and typically surface water has organics in it, you know, just from, generally from being outside, not in the ground. So when those organics are treated with chlorine, they interact, and the byproduct of that is trihalomethanes, which compose of four different contaminants. So DDP has a limit of 80 parts per billion for trihalomethanes that they monitor. So this is why, you know, we're in a situation, because the water and the sound water system has been above that limit, which led to the installation of the filters, the people over there.
Thank you.
So at the DDP meeting, there's a few other things that we learned about, that I learned about anyway for the first time. But they, they have a big concern with the security of our filter site, because the filter site is secure, they've been asking for us to, like, to build them around the facility for security purposes, and that hasn't been done. They're also concerned about chlorine application that we inject into the water, that is not secure. And again, anybody that was at those meetings, correct me if I'm making any mistakes here. Another big issue that they had, they had concerns about, and this is all in that 2013 report, is that our filter site probably is two miles from the town line, the city line? Kevin? The filter site, two miles.
Two miles.
What is it, a mile from the?
Just under a mile.
Just under a mile, okay. Well, within that mile stretch, there's eight homes. There's eight homes, and six of those homes are serviced by the town water, the other two have their own wells. So they're concerned about that because those people are getting water that does not go through the filter system.
Does not go through the charcoal filter, they have individual filters.
On their, in their own homes that were put in by the, by the Freetown Water Department.
Correct.
Okay. The big thing they talked about was the lack of action taken by the town, and DDP, at, at that meeting, was recommending to us either run a line down to these houses, which is gonna be significantly expensive, or move the filter site to down by the Far River line. And at that meeting, they indicated that, and I don't know how accurate this information was, what ISP had some property that they were willing to give to the town to put a filter site down there, so I don't know if that's true or not. One of the things we were talking about is, we kept talking about funding, funding, how are we gonna fund this? And DDP was shocked when we told them, when I told them that it was under an enterprise fund. And, and we only have about 650 to 660 customers, and 400 in the Sonora, and the rest are in East Freetown that come under the New Bedford Water System. And, you know, they said the enterprise method, the enterprise fund method works on a municipality that has a whole town of water system, but it certainly can't address the needs of the, of the town in this infrastructure. I know you're gonna tell me, you're gonna tell me that, that prominent revenue wants an enterprise fund, but that's, that's not a concern of mine, because my concern is how do we address these issues? We can't do it through 600 customers.
You don't have to do it through 600 customers.
I know, you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to you and you're gonna tell me how to do it, I know you are.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so we got through that, and we came home, and we're all thinking, what the heck are we gonna do? So then we have some other concerns, and I'm gonna go through all, all the concerns that have arisen since in the last, I don't know, two months, three months. We found out recently that there's some prior year outstanding water bills owed to both the city of Far River and the city of New Bedford. And in your sheet here, I broke it down as the current information that we got in the Water Department that Chandler was kind enough to put together and give me. For example, at Far River, we have four meters, ISP meter, we owe as of May 26, 2,167.85. These are prior year balances, the way it looks to me. Lodge meter, 12,306.83, small meter, 9,005.72.15, and Innovation Way, this is as of April, $3,030.40. We have the same situation in New Bedford. We have three meters, Brayley Road, we, we owe 12,835.11, something called Conduit, 6,105.92, and the Middleborough. And the Middleborough Roadline, 18,020.58. The other issue that I have that I wrote down here is, you know, how do we comply with the DDP requirements and mandates? And we thought that was all our headaches. And then Mon, then Friday, we had another meeting, and we met Brent LaRue. We met Brent LaRue, and Brent LaRue is a, lives in Freetown, he's one of our call firemen lieutenants. But he represents a company called Airgas, which is building down in the Sonora. He's the district manager for Airgas. The two companies currently building a new site off of Ridge Hill Road, unfortunately, they are in the process of engineering their fire suppression system. Flow testing failed, because when we have our filters operating, there is not enough water flow to meet the fire suppression needs. This is not a new problem apparently. This has been an issue for all the businesses on the Far River slash Freetown line. In essence, when the filters are in use, all users with fire suppression system using town water as a source are at risk. When they're using, when they're using the filter system. So generally speaking, it's what, Kevin, May, June, July, and August?
September.
September. So five months. I'm new on the Water Commission, but the other two members that have longer time on the Water Commission than I, they, they weren't even aware of this. As a selectman, I've been on for six, this is my sixth year, I have never heard of, about the problems, I've never heard about the 2013 DDP report and so forth, so we got some issues that we have to, that we have to address. I guess the most significant, significant issue in my opinion, is the fact that a new company on Ridge Hill Road can't put in their fire sprinkler system because they don't have the flow. And as Kevin Desmaris, who is our system operator, pointed out at the meeting on Friday, well, any company that's online that has sprinklers during the summer, if there was an incident, and the sprinklers have to go on, they're not gonna have enough flow unless we go down and we physically shut off a valve.
For clarification. The, the issue is not so much with the sprinkler systems having, not having enough flow, but if there was another incident, say we had to get on a fire hydrant at the same time, there could potentially. The bigger issue that has risen is when, in fact, somebody gets on a hydrant, say to do a flow test, accidentally, stop in shop's automatic tank fills up, their tank fills up automatically at a high rate. You have backflow devices that pop, and backflow devices just prevent potable water mixing in with the fire suppression system, and when that does, it drains all the water out of the fire suppression system, and it causes the fire alarms to go off. So there are multiple issues caused, as a result.
Okay, now, I'm just gonna, for the record, Brent LaRue is here, your engineers that are designing the system can't go forward, correct?
That's what they said, they can't go forward because with the filters in place, it's not sufficient flow to design a system. They tested again with the bypass on without the filters, and it was sufficient, they could design it, but they weren't gonna take the chance of designing a system based on five months out of the year, filters being in, and, and God forbid something happens.
So our representative that's here from Environmental Partners, is there a way to change that bypass valve to go automatic?
Yes. Yeah, it's something that we believe pointed out in that report as well from about three years ago.
From three years?
As an option of not only the building, the chemical feed additions, everything sort of meets the, the DDP's guidelines, but there is a way to have a valve that automatically would sense a drop in pressure, which would be during a fire event, which would then automatically open and allow untreated water through to meet the higher demands that would be necessitated by the event that's occurring, so.
Now would that be the quickest way to resolve the issue at this point in time?
For, I guess, for just solving the issue of.
We got two other companies going up there, in addition to Airgas.
Yeah, that would, that would be the quickest way, outside of completely abandoning the approach of filtration there, but you need it to meet your other DDP requirements, so your hand would be forced to.
To stay as compliant as possible and catch you the water flow.
Right.
Is it a volume question or is it a, is it a pressure question?
It's just the fact that you're trying to squeeze all that flow through three or four inch hoses through the pressure filters, so. I believe it's a 12 inch line that runs down, so.
12 inch main, 10 inch leg, goes down to three of.
So it's all through full or all that through four inch main?
And to answer your question, pressure, we have pressure in the system every day use, I can go put on a pressure gauge on right now during the middle of the day, I'm getting EPSI virtually everywhere in the Sonora, at least. They show us it's 110. Should there be an event, somebody hits a hydrant, accident, knocks the hydrant off, water's spewing, that's when.
That's when the back.
That's when his solution would help, but to your point, that's when the volume of water, so yes, it's volume, once that volume goes, you're losing pressure.
Brian, I'm, I'm, we're looking for a quick temporary thing in between now and when we solve the DDP.
Stopgap.
Situation.
Right.
The stopgap between, you know, so that Brent can continue on and the other businesses, and then, you know, we'll do whatever we have to do for the DDP, and then, you know, go from there. My question is, I don't wanna do things twice, and if we move that filter site, and we eventually are gonna have to go to a 12, at least a 10 or 12 inch filter site, but all this stuff that we got coming into town, three inch filter site is just not gonna cut it. So my, my thing is, I don't wanna put up a building, put up, put this valve in and then have to rip it all out if we move this filter site up to the, the other company up there on that piece of land, so that we can get, pick up everybody on the way into town. Because like was said before by the chairman of the selectmen, Sadik, that we have homes up there that have to be picked up. So we either gotta trench back up the street, or move the filter site up to the beginning on this ISP property, hopefully we can either buy it, or they'll give it to us, one or the other, put the filter site up there, put the correct size filters that we need for that 12, we can, obviously can't go bigger than the 12 inch line, because that's all we got coming in. But then that would take care of all our woes, now if this other valve can stay down below down there.
That's a question I have, when you're.
Yeah, you know.
Is this valve gonna be, can we retrofit it to the new system, or is it, it's a 12 in, 4 out?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's certainly a good point. The bigger question too is, you know, that, that area town's seeing a lot of development, so at what point are, is the three inch or four inch hose not even gonna be able to meet, meet your peak demands during summer? So, you know, and, and that, that valve, it's, it's a situation there, you'd have to.
You're building it for that.
Building it specifically for that site, you would need to do the same thing again if you're concerned about having the same amount of flow available, unless the new site is sized to adequately handle fire flow.
Which we would do. Should be sized properly, but how much would that valve cost? I mean, we're holding up a couple of companies right now, how much would that valve cost?
I'd say it's probably between 50 and 75 thousand dollars. Just, it has to be engineered, it has to be put out to public bid, prevailing wages.
How much is the valve thing?
The, just the valve itself is probably almost between 6 and 10 thousand dollars just for the valve, never mind.
And we can't, as a stopgap, we can't take the valve out that we have and put this one in? Why is that?
Well, it's, it's a special pilot system that works, and you also need to give it space in order to operate. So there's a lot, there's a lot of other parts and pieces that go along with the valve. It's a, it has to sense pressure from one side of the valve to the other side, so, and once it senses that, that, the drop in pressure, it then would tell the valve to open. So it's a, it's a very sophisticated valve, it's not, essentially you're stopping it, you're replacing someone that would get up in the middle of the night and go open a valve for you, it's doing it kind of automatically.
What I'm trying to say is that, you know, a 50 or 75 thousand dollar situation isn't something that we can do to get Brent and the other customers off the hook here. I mean, that has to go to town meeting and out to bid, and this whole big long procedure. I, I would think there has to be some way we could temporarily hook something up to, to open that valve, you know, until we get the big picture handled of what we have to do with DDP and everything else as the big package.
I mean, I don't, as far as something that's automated, there's a, there's a certainly, there's a process, a minimum process that you have to meet, just as far as timeline goes, not only for.
Now, these, these lines, I'm sorry, I, I'm just, if I, Kevin, these lines that are in the street that we switch, I mean, I know the valves you're talking about, because you showed them to me. Are those 12 inch?
Yes.
So, in essence, if we put that valve in, that 12 inch valve, that automatic changeover valve there, could that valve be taken out after and moved if we had to? And save the cost of the valve?
It could, yeah.
Yeah, okay, because it'd be the right size, correct? So we wouldn't lose the valve, so that would, you know, and it would just be the labor to dig it up, and we, would we abandon those lines or just put a coupling in there that are there in the street now? Other words.
No, we'd be utilizing them, those are our.
We just have to make some, we would have to dig that up anyway, if we move the filter site, we would have to dig that up and make changes there anyway.
You'd have to ban it and.
It would be abandoned, the 10 inch legs.
So we would have to open it up anyway, so I, and under that, if we could save that valve, we, we'd still have to dig it up anyway when we, if we made these changes, so it wouldn't be a loss, it would, you know. But it's not a problem of worrying about the valve, it's, the problem is getting something so.
Well, this is what I'm saying, we could do this.
Businesses can go on. The valve, we know we could use the valve.
We can do this for now, we can do this for now.
No, but he's saying it's gonna take 50 or 75 thousand dollars to do it for now, and, and that's a big long, that's, that's a big long process. This is a good time for our town accounting.
Oh, sure.
You didn't think it was gonna be easy, did you?
Uh, well, a couple of things, certainly you could try to have a town meeting to get an appropriation in order to move forward. You do have a borrowing authorization for 75,000 for improvements to the filter site. I don't know, this, I guess, is taking place at the filter site?
No, so this would, that would have been part of the improvement.
Would have been part.
Okay, so, I mean, you already have an appropriation contingent upon a borrowing, so the borrowing just needs to happen, and there's the funding source.
Well, yeah, but there, then you have to go out to bid and all.
Well, right, but you can't violate procurement law.
No, but there's no fast fix. There was absolutely no. I mean, a 7,500 dollar valve, and X amount of dollars to put it in is a kind of an emergency thing.
You still have to, you have to go out to bid.
Yeah. There's no way around these rules. But we have the 75,000, we don't have to have a town meeting. Well, you don't have the 75,000, because we still have to go out to bid, but we have the authorization. We have the authorization.
Right, and you would need to borrow, so there is a little bit of lead time in order to get the money.
And who's gonna foot, who, who is responsible for the 75,000 dollar borrowing?
Ultimately, as a general obligation of the town, it would, for accounting purposes, be assigned to the Water Enterprise Fund.
But for actual dollars, it comes from taxation?
No.
I mean, a $7,500 valve and X amount of dollars to put it in is a kind of an emergency thing.
It's not a public...
You still have to, you have to sell to bid.
Yeah.
There's no way around these rules.
But we have the $75,000, we don't have to have a town meeting.
Well, you don't have the $75,000 because we still have to go out to bid, but we have the authorization.
We have the authorization.
Right, and you would need to borrow, so there is a little bit of lead time in order to get the money.
And who's going to foot, who, who is responsible for the $75,000 waterway?
Ultimately, as a general obligation of the town, it would, for accounting purposes, be assigned to the Water Enterprise Fund.
But for actual dollars, it comes from taxation?
No.
No?
It would come from the Enterprise Fund, however, the general fund could subsidize the cost of the loan, which is the debt service base.
Right, the whole point here is that you cannot operate a water and sewer commission on 600 customers.
Well, I will disagree with you because there are other communities that have less than 650, one community only has 100 water users and they are operating as an enterprise fund, so...
They can operate as, as an enterprise fund, but they can't foot these type of bills?
On, no, they, they cannot foot these types of bills and that's why the general fund typically subsidizes that.
That's fine, as long as the general fund subsidizes these things because these improvements that are being made, you're only, you're talking about improvements that have to be made for us to attract new business.
Well, I can understand that, but you can also have some of the rate takers take up a piece of it because they do directly benefit from this. So you could consider some type of betterment situation and, and share the cost in some type of proportion between the actual users of this system and all town residents. So that's an option, it doesn't have to be one or the other, you could look at a combination approach.
Could I ask that one? Do we have money in capital stabilization? This is capital, is it appropriate to use some of the capital stabilization money?
Again, that would take a town meeting vote in order to appropriate that, but that would be something that you could certainly do.
You guys had money, you asked for $75,000, you already had a plan to spend it somewhere else.
Well, it was on the filter site problem that we had.
But if this valve is going to take up your whole $75,000, you're not doing it...
We're going to have to come back again.
Again in October and try to do what you originally wanted to do.
Obviously, this is critical right now and I don't think anybody's going to debate that. And we have these, we have to do this stuff for the DEP. If we do not do this, we're going to get fined.
They're going to do another, another report come August. And they already told us at that meeting, we were all there, you know, we're going to be facing fines because it's been way too long.
We've got to design, like I say, I'm a firm, myself personally, my own personal opinion is we've got to go to a, either a 10 or 12 inch filter site and it would be great if we could move it up the road, pick up all this stuff that we need to pick up on the way down, save that valve, of course, now we got the valve, but we can move that valve up to the other filter site up there, you know?
Well, I think it's a wise decision to still have a valve like that, so if there is a fire, a multiple fire, we have full flow...
Our carbon, I mean, the carbon costs thousands, again, I'll defer to Kevin, but the carbon in these filters is, is a massive expense, so if you've got a huge fire in the town of Freetown...
You don't want to be wanting to, where our carbon at?
Why blow the carbon on that, you know?
You know, just to keep this in perspective, this is an open meeting, so people may be sitting watching this on TV when it plays and they might want to know why we have to deal with a THM issue. The reason we're dealing with a THM issue is that in the warm months, the water that we get from Fall River, and correct me if I'm misleading anybody, doesn't meet the standard. And that's why we have to filter our water that we're paying Fall River for. And later on, as we finish up this open part of the session, I'm going to ask for a executive session to move forward and to talk about the possibility of, of maybe taking some legal action against the city. So that's later on in the, in the discussion. But how do, I mean, how much time do you have? I mean, this stuff doesn't happen overnight.
Well, I mean, I'm probably about a month and a half away from being complete, except for the sprinkler system. The sprinkler system to, to design and fabricate is probably another month or two out, so I'm probably looking at three, maybe, at the, because of the sprinkler system. I mean, I, they could be ready to go, I could be ready to move in August 1st, but I, at this point, obviously that's not going to happen and I have about $500,000 into the building right now.
Knowing the fact, as you say, if the town is, is willing, which I think they are, to do this, it's going to get done. So I mean, could you proceed with that, knowing that that valve is going to be done?
The engineer said he won't do it. He won't, he won't design the system until we have a fix. He's not going to put a stamp on it to say, you know, we're going to, we're eventually going to do this. He wants it in place or at least, I guess, I would assume, under construction before he puts a stamp on it.
And for me, you probably would want to do another test.
Exactly.
Once the valve is in, to ensure and see what the actual things are.
Absolutely. Now, Ryan, if that valve goes in and, and it works the way it should, it should alleviate the problem for these guys.
We still have other problems coming down the line.
Oh, we got it.
Three other buildings, three other businesses going in there that are large scale businesses.
Yeah, and we got, the other issue is that we definitely have to do something with the filter site. And certainly, it's crazy, we're talking, if we, we have to put a building there, a secure building, and you're not talking that we're going to do this for $100,000 here, we're talking about, I would say, anywhere around $2 to $3 million. And it, moving the site and everything, this...
And in all fairness, Bob, the chairman, myself, and, and Mr. Sadek, we knew nothing of these problems until this all started coming about now. I mean, this is not something that we knew and we just didn't plan for.
Right, I've been on the board of selectmen, this is my sixth year, right? I never knew about the report that came out in 2013. Never saw it until I became a water commissioner. Okay? So, I mean, now we're faced with this and I don't, we don't have any movement here.
We got to move, I mean, we just got to move. I mean, we just, we don't have a choice here because the fines are going to be magnanimous.
Now, I think at one of our meetings with Environmental Partners, and I'm doing this from memory, but just to design the filter site that we're going to need, I mean, we're talking about $35,000 just for the design work, right? I think that's what, somebody threw that figure out after.
That was probably just for the, all the chemical feed improvements and for the building of the...
But the three inch though?
Yeah, for the existing site. Usually, if you're talking one to $2 million, usually engineering and other fees are between 10 and 20% of, for, for design and construction. So, you know, DEP, if I just advise you too, at the, the last meeting, you guys are already under an ECO, which was administrative consent order years ago. I think it got closed unofficially. They said after the sanitary survey happens in August, they'll probably put you under another ECO. And this time, they're going to be looking for you to give them deadlines where you can start to meet the requirements. And they'll, luckily, they're working with us still and they'll allow us to help set these dates, but if for any reason their dates are either taking too long or the dates aren't met, then I think they're going to start to get really serious and start imposing, which is an ECO P, which is the penalty, which, which they start instilling fines.
They were talking about fines that could be on a per day basis at that meeting.
Yeah, oh, you said, yeah, yeah. But you've got, they don't lay out a time, they don't lay out a requirement.
Jack, they did that, they, they did that in 2013, we did nothing as a town.
Yeah, but they're going to do it again, right? In August. They're going to be with a hammer in their hand this time. Yeah, the hammer would be, if you don't do it, I'm going to snap my head.
So, let me tell you where I'm coming from too on this stuff here. And with all due respect, we have a great town accountant, she's right on topic, everything, but her and I disagree on one thing, and that's the Enterprise Fund. I'm going to tell you why I disagree on the Enterprise Fund is because this water commissioner, water department, water commissioners, we were, we were in existence a long time ago. They were, it was the same type of board, three member board doing all this work. Then back in 2006, was it 2006 when, when we had to put up the pump station? Because the town of Freetown...
2006 was the filter site.
But when did we do the pump station on the way we moved? Before that?
Uh, no, after that.
It was after that?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, let me, let me, because I want the public to hear this. So, the town of Freetown gets sued by a group of people at Bradley Road because of environmental, it was environmental injustice and we lost because of the way we were delivering water to these people. We had to put up a, 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 a new...
It was part of the settlement.
It was part of the settlement, was to put up a, 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 a pump station and didn't we increase the lines going to the houses at the time, I think?
That I don't recall or know of, I know we did.
Well, anyway, the bottom line is then, all of a sudden, now this was a town lawsuit against the town of Freetown. All of a sudden, what happens is that the Enterprise Fund is created and the customers now that are in the, the water customers, both in Asuna and East Freetown, now the Enterprise Fund took over the responsibility of paying the debt. Instead of the town, who was the one that was sued and found guilty, the water people ended up getting, assuming the debt. And that was wrong. And luckily, last year, we were able to reverse that and reimburse, hopefully reimburse these individuals that were paying this debt because they were socked with it by the establishment of the Enterprise Fund. That's why I disagree with the Enterprise Fund. And I knew, the town accountant was going to raise her hand.
Okay, in all fairness, the adoption of the Enterprise Fund did not dictate the fact that they, the debt had to be paid by the Enterprise Fund. That could have been negotiated as part of the terms between the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee and the Board of Water Commissioners.
It never happened, did it?
Okay, maybe it didn't, but it could have. So it is not a reflection of the Enterprise Fund.
It's a, it's a reflection of the Enterprise Fund and how the Enterprise Fund was established. And that's what I'm definitely afraid of when we have a situation that's a situation, a townwide situation, what, 600 customer situation?
As I just stated, you can make an agreement between the three boards to outline what will be the cost of the town.
That's what we should do. Okay, so I don't know where we are with, I don't know what we can do.
I have a question, is there any other options besides the sprinkler system as you're requiring to be designed?
We, we have to meet that code, it's by the building code, if we're, our use, we have, you know, store oxygen and stuff like that, so it's required.
So dry chemicals out and all that stuff's out?
Yeah, is it, yep. How about an on-site storage tank and fire pump?
Well, that could be an option, but I mean, that wasn't something we had designed into this, you know, into our budget.
Crazy, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, it's a rental, it's a rental property, we rent it for five, we're leasing it for five years, so if the landlord decides after five years to tell us to get out, we've already spent half a million into the building and then another couple hundred thousand dollars into a tank and pump and we're out.
The other question I had was, are we getting portable water from City of Portland?
No. Was supposed to be. We do some of it, but during the summer months, it's usually up over the 80.
But we wouldn't, but we wouldn't be using the filters?
Yeah, I think, again, Kevin can chime in, there are times in the wintertime when we don't have to use the filters and, and he can bypass them.
Yeah, filters typically come offline sometime in...
To save the town's electricity.
October, because the inbound is, is low enough.
But people still like to drink the water in the summertime?
They do.
So we have to, we have it filtered?
Exactly.
Because we're not getting portable water from Fall River during the summer months?
We, we, we see water from Fall River that is at times over the limit for THMs, that's correct.
That was the question, thank you.
You could get it just under the limit and the detention time in this sort of system could push it over the limit. So technically, they said they could be in compliance when they're giving you a 78 instead of an 80, which I don't think is entirely fair, but...
And there's nothing we can do other than filter it.
Right.
Right, we have to, our, our obligation under our PWS is...
What's a PWS case anyway that we don't know?
Public water.
I was going to say, it's a public water system.
Okay.
But our obligation is provide good quality drinking water that meets all the standards. And to Ryan's point, it could be coming across the line at 60, but the growth in our system has to be taken into consideration and our test points are further down line, downstream. So you don't want to be in a situation where you have the filters on and you come in with an 81 and now you're over the limit. We've been successful in being compliant with the filters that are on, to everyone's credit, for, for years now. Our results are good. It's the cost, it's the ancillary issues that come up, whether it be fire protection. So it's, it needs to be addressed. And I, I have one question relative to time, I know you want to get in. We save a bunch of time, Kim, do we not, if we utilize the, the authority to go borrow now, that we have to go borrow now rather than going to town meeting for something, correct?
Right, well, as you, as you know, you have the $75,000 authorization, it would be a matter of letting the treasurer know that you wish to borrow.
Yeah.
And then it would be, hopefully, the engineers that would be putting together the package and getting that out, so...
So I guess I'm saying...
There's really nothing stopping you from going with the $75.
No, but it saves time, so we're thinking about how long would it actually take to do this process if this is what my, the water commissioners choose to do.
Well, if we went out to bid now, let's say we're going to use the $75,000 and you go out to bid now, how long do you think it would take us to get that temporary valve in, in operation?
Well, probably between design, bidding, construction, probably around the same timeline as he would need it to be in place would probably be about, about three months.
That's if we start it tomorrow.
Yeah.
We have another, which we haven't discussed, and it was brought to my attention by, I forgot by who, but we have the same problem at all the other fire suppression equipment that, you know, like the, the handicap school, if, if we have a drop in pressure, they can't, their sprinkler systems aren't going to work, their fire suppression equipment, it was never thought of before, but the other businesses we have down there that have sprinkler systems, they're in trouble too, not just, not just his.
This is a major problem.
It's, it's a major problem and it actually is a big liability for the town.
Mr. Chairman, I think we might, might be wise to let the public know, since this is being filmed and we'll be on the air, why DEP has a THM standard and what the potential is for getting sick by drinking water with THM. At a meeting with DEP, I asked the question and received the answer that if you drink two liters of water that has more than 80 pots per billion THM trihalomethanes in it, two liters of water a day for 70 years, you have a slight increase in chance of, of contracting cancer. Well, you know what? You can, first of all, I don't know anybody that drinks two liters of water a day. We only have THM issues in the four or five months that the water, that the months of warm weather. So it's not likely that anybody's going to have any significant health effects from this water. I think that's important for everybody to know. We're doing all this because some guy in EPA in Washington, probably in the cellar of one of those big buildings, came up with these regulations and DEP enforces them in Massachusetts. They have smiles on their faces, they told me this. I don't think it's funny.
No, it's not funny, we...
But this is the situation we're up against. And we need to meet the requirements, but I don't think anybody should have a significant concern about whether or not this water is, quote unquote, potable.
If I could just piggyback on that, Mr. Chairman, do you mind?
Certainly.
For clarification, you are, and you are correct, Jack, but we meet or exceed all the requirements. So we are filtering when we need to. Typically, every two weeks, I, I test the water inbound from Fall River, so I know, hey, it's getting a little high, we need to get the filters online. So while the risk is very, very slight, people shouldn't fear because they are getting water because we filter it and monitor it, that it meets or exceeds the...
And that's exactly precisely why we're here, because if we filter the water in the summer months and it's causing another issue, but we cannot sacrifice the people that drink our water, that have the, the valve, you know, not use the filters. So, so we got a dilemma that we got to address as a town.
And I will say that the last lab results were excellent, that we got as far as our water goes and Kevin was doing an excellent job with it, you know? I mean, the lab results were really super, so...
Yeah, they would, they would tend, the, the limit is 80, if you will, reportable limit's 80, in our system downstream, 10 and 15. Well, well below the 80.
Since we got open meetings, right, right now, I mean, you guys interested in making a motion to move forward and get this project going?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with this and, and, and start the process to borrow the money.
Borrow the money, we already have money.
You have an authorized treasure.
We have to talk to the treasurer.
We have to, we're authorized to borrow.
Authorized the treasurer.
To start the process to get this going, so this gentleman can get his business up and running.
And authorize the engineer to develop the plan.
Yeah, and whatever plans necessary to, to input this.
All right, I second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motions carried.
They don't need anything from us. They're authorized to.
Other than the fact that I would like to, uh, have a discussion on, uh, the fact that the, 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 the cost of this should not be borne by the people that have water, the six hundred customers.
In the enterprise.
In the enterprise. And so I would like a motion that we, you know, this has to go to town meeting, I guess, right? If we make a motion, we have to go to town meeting?
No, I, you can.
The board of selectmen can do it, right?
Between, I, I would include the Finance Committee as part of this, but if you, uh, boards wanted to, um, work out an agreement that it's your intent that this debt service will be paid for out of the general fund, it will not be coming out of the enterprise fund. I mean, I certainly can run that by the auditors and the Department of Revenue and, again, you, you're making an agreement that that's how it's going to be.
Yeah, and you know what? One of our meetings, when we met with environmental partners, they actually came in and talked about, you know how we talk, if you heard around town, I mean, you know, sure, they'd like to bring the shoreline down to the town hall.
There are grants available.
So there are grants available, but not to cover the two and a half million dollars. So that's another situation. You can't put that on the backs of, what, maybe fifty people? That it's gonna pass by their house, two and a half million dollars? You can't do it because this is benefiting the town. You're bringing in businesses. You're bringing, you're increasing the tax structure. So that, maybe that's for another duty.
It, it seems like it.
It is. We, we probably need to have joint meeting with commissioners and the finance.
Correct.
You might wanna make a motion to support for the, for the motion that we just passed, that's all.
No, you guys, I don't, board doesn't have to support the motion. I don't know.
You have the authority to borrow money, you're taking your vote, so.
But we can still a meeting up, a subsequent meeting to, to deal with the seventy-five thousand and further capital investments that we have to make to make the system work. Cause certainly, we're gonna have to make a major capital investment to either move the filter site. We know we gotta increase the filters. We can't run that way.
But at least the valve that we're gonna buy, we can, we ship it and they still gotta, it isn't like we gotta dig the street up just to do that once we hit the other site rolling. We gotta put a sleeve in it.
That's down the road. You're talking, they're talking probably a year away.
Well, it's gonna happen though.
Concern at this time.
How does that make you feel, Brad?
We'll see. Well, hopefully it goes through relatively smooth, cause I mean, I don't think the engineer's gonna design it until it's in and done. So if it's three months, that means I'm probably five months out. Because he's not gonna take, I, I know an engineering firm would not take the liability of putting a stamp on it. Without, like you said, especially doing a follow-up and knowing that it's gonna.
Can you drop a little bit more, Ryan, uh, about the timeline and the tasks that you need to complete in order to get this thing fully engineered, ready to go up to do?
All right, so as soon as we get authorization, that money's there, um, we can start, um, essentially just designing it. Which comes down to probably a little, uh, site survey. We have to, um, look at the layout of all the valves that are there, make sure they're all, we have enough space to actually put it unless there's not any, another, more, more pipe work or other valves that have to go in to, uh, complete the project. But, uh, then we have to prepare the design plans, a set of specifications, and then we have to go up to public bid, which is generally about at least a month process from the time you advertise to, uh, minimum time that you have to bid is two weeks. You have to, uh, tag, like the bids, publish them, do a recommendation to award, sign your contracts, and then have a pre-construction meeting, have you select your contractor based on a little bid. And you come out based on his timetable, you know, sometimes they can't just show up the next day and say, we're ready to go. It might be a month out or so. Um, so it's all, you know, from the time you start bidding to the time you have a signed contract, ready to go, sometimes it's at least a six to eight week process, just for the bidding, not, not kind of designing and construction.
No, Kim, the money is really there, right? It's just a matter of.
Yeah, the authorization is there, so.
Well, then we can, we can start sooner than, than, and, you know, you guys are good clients as well. I trust you that, you know, it's, it's there and it, it's fine as long as the authorization's there.
Hey, if you can't come up with the seventy-five, we've asked Brad to kick in some money.
Brent, can you get the system designed all up till he puts a stamp on it?
Yeah, I mean, he could do the drawings part of it, I would say, but then now I'm taking the liability of paying him for that engineering if this doesn't go through.
Well, it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen.
This is gonna go through as long as we can do it for seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, but if it comes in at a hundred, now what?
Well, if it comes in at a hundred, now what?
Yeah.
Special town meeting.
Yeah, there you go.
So, yeah, so now I could be seven or eight months out.
You know what? Why don't we just take it out of the fire department, uh, but.
Sure. Well, I mean, I guess that's my concern is that I do have an existing office space there now that does have a sprinkler system in it. Is it protected? If there's a fire now, is this system gonna fail?
Not as long as we get Kevin to run up there and turn the valve.
Well, again, I, I spoke, I spoke with the fire chief today, uh, about that and we went over some rough numbers, if you will. You know, sprinkler heads maximums.
Twelve pounds.
Ten, twelve pounds, you know, ten to twelve gallons a minute. They're only, they only go off in the room. We've had instances where they've gotten on hydrants and filled up tanker trucks with the filters on if I'm not around to do, or it happens before. And we don't have the issue. The, the issue, the potential with the sprinkler systems is not that they wouldn't be able to work in the current state because there's enough volume and pressure there. It's should you have a catastrophic break, an accident, or there's a conflagration in, in the village where you're getting on multiple hydrants, multiple tankers are filling up all at once.
Well, how did his system flunk then? If that's the case.
His system didn't flunk.
Yeah.
The, the hydrant flow test produced results that were, that were below normal for a regular, uh, sprinkler system without a storage tank and booster pump.
So it, it flunked? He, he couldn't get.
The hydrant flow tested, yes.
There was a hydrant.
Well, it didn't flunk. For his purposes, it flunked.
Yeah.
If it were that, if those were the results, let's just say, those were the results.
Yeah.
He would have to design and build a tank with a booster pump, just like everybody else who would be required to have a sprinkler in their building.
Does all the rest of people that, businesses and schools that we have down there, do they have, do they have that right now?
Some.
Stop and shop.
Stop and shop has a tank, some have booster, uh, pumps.
What about the other places, the restaurant, uh, you know?
Independence Harbor does run straight off the.
And what about, I, uh, what do you call it?
I do see, uh, Crystal Spring.
I don't know, honestly. I know they have sprinkler systems in, in most of their buildings.
But we don't know, and we don't know if they have booster pumps?
They don't have a.
That I know, I don't think that they do, but I don't wanna speak. I, I, I haven't seen any.
So they're at risk? Are they totally off the, the system though? Off the water line?
Yeah, but they're off the water.
They used to have wells, I don't know if they're.
They use the water line, yeah.
They, they initially paid for the water line, didn't they?
It was Crystal Springs that brought the water line in.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they didn't go through all this. It cut through Stop and Shop property.
Went down Main Street, came up Narrows, went across country through, uh, Independent Harbor.
Independent Harbor.
At which time, Independent Harbor also joined in and tied in.
Cause we used to use that hydrant right out in front of Independent Harbor. And that's the first time we learned that if you use that hydrant and it drops, it's Stop and Shop, all the alarms in Stop and Shop go off. It, it happened. This was years ago when it happened.
After the filter site was in?
Before, way before all that. Matter of fact, it might not have been that, it might have been Polaroid, I was gonna say. It was Polaroid. No, it was Polaroid.
All right, so I guess they have their authorizations. So, Brett, and, uh, no, you can't stay, cause we're gonna go in there. I'm gonna ask you to go with the executive session.
You can keep whoever you need.
That's correct.
Instead of discussion.
Right. Well, I'm gonna, uh, under Mass General Law Section twenty-one A three, uh, I'd like to discuss strategies with respect to litigation with the City of Fall River regarding a water agreement dispute that we have. And I myself, Paul Sadik, as the Freetown Board of Selectmen Chairman, I declare my opinion that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position and I ask for a motion to enter into the executive session. Zero motion.
Just to be clear, that is under Mass Gen, Mass General Law, Section thirty A, Section, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, line three.
Line three.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call.
Aye.
Paul Sadik, aye. Okay, we're going into the executive session. I don't think I need, I need the water commissioners. You're here as the, um, taking the.
And.
Thank you, Ryan.
We, we, we.
Kevin.
Kevin, what are you doing? We won't be coming back.
You want me?
We won't be coming back into the open session.
We'll not be coming back as far as I'm concerned. Do we need Kevin?